Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewstv.
Rock says now if you would stand with me we have prayer and prayers for the intermeetings please. Thank you Lord for loving us, thank you all for what you do for us. Lord we pray that we might seek your guidance in all we do, Lord. And give you thanks for all the blessings. We pray that we will act to you today and all decisions we make might be in accordance with thy will for the betterment of this county. We thank you for the Lord that is here today and their concern of this county and pray that your Lord might look over and care for us. Forgive before we say, Lord, these things last thy name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call meeting order, have a motion, we approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Folds likewise. Have a motion, we approve claims.
I'll make a motion. My second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Folds likewise. Uh, I'd say Mr. Thorndale a few minutes late, but he will, uh, Stephanie, would you?
Of course y'all know I'm Stephanie Clark with the AMA. It's time for us to begin the process of updating our hazardous mitigation plan for the county. This has to be updated every five years and last year, the last time our plan was done it took 2014. And this plan is required by the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Each jurisdiction has to create a hazardous mitigation plan in order to be eligible for funding from FEMA. And in the past in 2014, we formed the Northwest Alabama Hazardous Mitigation Group with Calvert-Franklin and Winston Counties. And other counties may join us this year because we have lot risk and hazards in each county. That will cut down on the cost, you know, the cost for developing the plan or they split among the counties. And right now NACOG is also involved and they're in the process of trying to get a grant to fund the development of our plan or the updating of our plan. And it's an effort to evaluate and identify all natural hazards that may affect our region. And I just need to get your approval to stay in the multi-jurisdictional plan with the other counties and for NACOG to go ahead and get the funding to develop our plan and if you may.
You say there are other counties that might come in.
There may be some more counties in Northwest Alabama that may join our multi-jurisdictional group this year. And that would cut the amount that would be required from us.
So what's your motion, needed a motion to?
I need a motion to allow NACOG to apply for the grants and for us to stay in the multi-jurisdictional group for our hazardous mitigation plan.
How many, do you say was in it now?
Now it's Calvert-Franklin, Winston and us.
You hear the motion to have second?
I mean, there's no money involved, or you, you're not asking, you just?
Not now, not now. We have until the end of 2019 to get our plan together. And NACOG is in the process of trying to get a grant ready to submit, to get funding to pay for the development of our plan. And really since they developed it, it really just, I told myself, it looks like it just needs to be tweaked a little, make sure, you know, because all of our hazardous, all of our hazards and risks are the same, nothing's changed, so. It's just the process of going through and getting everybody to sign on with it.
You say you had a motion?
Yes, that's the motion to have a second.
Oh, I see.
Okay, is there any discussion before we? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, hold.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it, y'all have a good day.
Mr. Thorndale?
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning, there you are, sir.
I'm alright. Uh, appreciate opportunity.
Give you the Lord.
If I, if I haven't been able to share with you my congratulations, we're proud to see you in these seats as new commission members, look forward to working with you as we have in the entire history of C3, about eight years now. We were formed in the fall of 2010. We were formed because we realized that we could do more together than separately. And that was to include three counties in a regional effort, especially in a rural area that needs so much, you can assemble all of your resources advantages, you just have more sales and you have more of a marketing budget to promote that because it's competitive out there. Everybody wants similar things that we want. And each are prepared differently, but then very similar. It's always that little bit of difference that you see in one community versus another that wins. And in small communities especially, it's tough for us to compete on a playing field that's not really level when you have larger communities that do have more to offer. And so we have, in the case of a regional effort of the area that I believe is competitive, is becoming more so and the success we had compares it out. So I'll share some of those things, but I want to first thank you for a great board that you've appointed. Each of our board members come from one selection by the commission, one by the founding organizations, which the merger of CDF Marion County, terms of dollars and marketing budgets, CDF Marion County and then the West Alabama Economic Development Authority down in Lamar and Fayette. When those two merged, they also were able to get a vote on this board as far as board member and then the others from the member of mayors. In Marion County, your partner Scott Hunt is a voting member and then Matthew here's the expatio member. And we appreciate them, they've grown a lot to the board in terms of ideas and are looking over your investment, make sure that we do the right things. The other board members in Marion County, Philip Hare, who represents the CDF, and that'll soon be the change, so that Wade Nixon, Chairman of the Board, works here at Bevel. And Wade has been expatio on our board, it's now the chairman of CDF and become a new rule board. And then the other board member from the mayors is Bill Atkinson. Bill Atkinson had a lot to do with the formation of C3 and is, uh, we don't just get another attorney, we get, uh, Leader has been the mayor of Winfield years ago and been involved with this commission and this county in many ways in positive manners. So we've got those three from Marion County. Our Al Elbert is our incoming board chair, Al was here. Al's former mayor of Selligent, worked for many years at Heister Yell, back with NatCo and probably even a different name prior to that, Al. Goes through, they're gonna have a new name very soon in terms of announcements, you may have heard about last week when these folks from the Chicago area are closing a plant up there and moving the corporate headquarters to Selligent. It's called Bolzoni, Bolzoni Aroma, which would be on their signs, well that's a real good name. It's B-O-L-Z-O-N-I. Bolzoni is a company that makes attachments for forklifts, but as you know, Heister has made over a thousand parts. And there's sometimes insults when you name any number because they did twice that number of parts, they're a very precision sophisticated machine shop. And Greg Canfield toured here, who's Secretary of Commerce, when he toured NatCo, he said, "This is like many of our own suppliers on the Wood Road that are able to do so many parts for forklifts." And so this case in bringing in the Bolzoni attachments for these forklifts and changing the name out front, but it'll still be a fully owned subsidiary of Heister Yell. That'll be about seventy million dollars investment, should be about fifty jobs. They're gonna dedicate a hundred thousand feet of their space. And they didn't have that much space in Selligent, so they've gone across the street to a former Deer Valley facility. That building has come along the way in improvements, they were digging the pits for the, uh, the dock, dock pride, eleven doors last week. But they're gonna be moving a lot of their work across the street and then bringing in Bolzoni really beginning in January. So that was a good plus for us to wind up what's been a good year. We're at sub four unemployment rates in our area. We started with C3, the average unemployment rate was thirteen point two. That was in the fall of 2010. And the unemployment rates now as you look are about four percent or less. Marion County is less than Walker County and Jasper, Marion County is less than Calvert County, less than Mobile County, less than many counties that you look around and you think, well, certainly they're doing better, we've read more about them. But the thing is that we've kind of been under the radar and have had a lot of good things going on in our area. And because again, we don't have the, uh, the major media coverage that they do in larger cities. But where we are from fifteen to seventeen, we have nineteen hundred and fourteen jobs announced, three hundred and twenty-eight million investment. That was through 2017. This year will be, it's gonna be close to a hundred million, it'll be about five hundred jobs. The thing about these companies that are growing and even moving in, they want to control that publicity because first of all, maybe they're gonna be scrutinized in what they're doing from a competitive standpoint. They want to make sure that they're just making a dollar, making a product. And that's the most important thing to them rather than publicity. So we don't have a lot of companies that share information about their comings and goings. But they do need to call us if they're looking for incentives. The state looks for one point of contact, one professional ally. And they really appreciate, I can tell you, when you see in a small area like this, that there is that one point of contact for the three counties. And so when these companies want incentives, we have to do the notifications of the state to say there are state and federal incentives that are gonna be asked for. And then the first thing they're gonna ask us, well, what are you doing locally to make it competitive? What kind of skin are you putting in the game? So that process takes place with every one of these expansions. And we appreciate these expansions because every one of those is a decision to grow here and not grow elsewhere. So we have had new companies come in, we continue to have that. Two great successes right here in Marion County, continued growth at Tiffin Motor Homes. Tiffin Motor Homes was a target for our organization for a long time in terms of, why don't they just do something down this way? We continue doing some things in Mississippi. But we wanted to talk to them about the advantages here. And when they finally got to the point that they tapped out on all their labor in the Red Bay area, which is happening with a lot of employers in this area, saying, well, there's enough jobs now, we don't need anymore, and it's actually getting more competitive to find good people. But they were certainly in a predicament in Red Bay, Alabama to have, you know, twelve hundred plus employees in a community of that size. So when they came to look at the building that was available and made available by Sterling RV owned by the city, they were able to go into that building and the building at its door. And now that's not even enough space, so that they're building a service center out on the interstate. And that's gonna be the first tenant there.
I was up this morning at the service center and boy, doing electrician work said they had plans right now to add on to the service center and they're not even through with it yet.
Yeah, that's, that's that company, it's been so successful, forty-five years in RV business and they're, um, that was really a class C model that they're building on the Mercedes chassis, Sprinter chassis, that, um, they already had the dealers asking me, how many of these can you send our way before they even had to come along to my homes? So that's gonna continue to grow, that's the largest growing segment in the RV market right now, the smaller, more manageable, both in terms of cost and driving them and maintaining them. So tenants do really well, they're probably close to two fifty right now, it's really hard to keep up, they're growing so fast. And then the same thing with Hamilton Homes right here in Hamilton. Those guys had a history at River Birch, but they've come to Hamilton with a brand new business and have, uh, have now exceeded two hundred employees and doing really well in the old Buccaneer building there. And same for our other manufactured homes companies. We get involved in things, especially now mentioned workforce, we get involved in things in terms of workforce development that, uh, of course is a responsibility of Bevel and so many other state programs are responsible for workforce and for training. But we worked with the mobile home companies just in recent weeks at the media at Bevel to come up with agreement to, for them to look at the Ready to Work program for their employees. Ready to Work is a program really just for soft skills, for those things. Companies are saying, we can train anybody at the technical side of our business. If they'll show up and be responsible for themselves and behave in a right manner, manner to listen and learn, then we'll teach them the job. And give them the job if they're going through this Ready to Work program. And that's the agreement now that these, several of the mobile home manufacturers and plus Tiffin, Tiffin makes, uh, makes homes except on wheels, except we got an engine in them. So, so they're all together in that agreement with Bevel. They're, yeah.
I came to the meeting, what, last Thursday, we were all done at Montgomery getting training. And then make a meeting, what was the gist of this, uh, this meeting last Thursday?
Bevel has an agreement now with Mercedes to look at how they're having a inflow of students that are already really on contract, have an agreement with Bevel, that these kids, if they go through certain training, will be promised jobs. And Bevel's done that, it began in Tuscaloosa, I mean, not Bevel, but Mercedes with Shelton State. And then they've done it with some others, even now in Handsful up at Wallace State. But that shows the growth and how people reach outside of just the immediate, immediate area for employees. Tuscaloosa's having that issue now, really problems are successful because of the folks just aren't there for the jobs. And Mercedes, of course, gets, gets their pick, but then the others are hurting to say, okay, we've got the remainder, but the remainder of that group's getting to be smaller. And so Tuscaloosa has had, they're, um, they're closer to three percent unemployment, but they're drawing from a wider area, a lot of our people drive to Mercedes each day. But that's again workforce, really means everything, it's why it's so important that Bevel continues to provide workforce programs.
Did I understand as well that they pay tuition, they also guarantee, uh, guarantee employment with a bonus?
They do, and that's a similar agreement that the, um, Bevel had sort of dipped their toe into with NTN here in Hamilton. So that you've got kids that are in high school, but they're getting to know that plant, uh, the equipment and the duties or responsibilities of a particular job that can lead to their promise of work down the road. And so you're seeing that with more and more companies. Again, of course, the state asks us, what incentives are we offering when we're enticing companies to come in? It's becoming more of that education side of the equations asking companies, what are you putting in to make sure that, you know, we have people in these seats and these training classes? And we'll certainly have them here keeping promise that there's gonna be work for them out there and what we're training is putting them in a position to get that work.
So what's the direct connection C3 has got with Selligent, Winfield and Hamilton Home Builders? What's the direct connection where C3 invites these people to expand their business? What's the connection? When you're telling me the unemployment rate just went down, a lot of this is due to President Trump and his restrictions has lifted. What's the direct connection that C3 has got with these three? Cause I know I've dealt with some of these.
Yeah.
So what's the direct connection with C3?
The, uh, essentially President Trump, cause some of those, um, some, some of the things about the trade tariffs, you know, meaning that calls are often say, well, that hurts us because companies that we have are international companies, but we've got several that are international companies, Japanese companies, Canadian companies, Mexican companies. The, um, the case is every one of those we talk to, we have, uh, they have an interest in making the most of their investments. They need the, the people to be trained, they need all of these dots to be connected. So we put in place, when we formed C3, to have a, a group that's daily looking at all of these aspects of business environment, what does it make us competitive? Are we promoting those things? Are we getting the word out that this is placed in welcome? It's a, um, it's process is always behind the scenes, but it always happens that when companies have these things that, um, come up as opportunities or come up as problems, then we're gonna probably be involved. Not always, there's some companies that aren't aware of, you know, what's available out there, but all of the companies that do have.
I guess what I'm asking, what can you show me that you can contact these people, C3 are spending our money wisely? What can you show me where C3 has been involved with these companies, expanding their businesses? And why should the county spend their money with C3? I guess that's what I'm trying to ask.
Well, because we're, we're a good thing going.
Well, I mean, I can say a good thing goes, but that don't mean anything.
Spending the money, the, uh, but, but fact is each of these companies that come up with these, um, requests, and they'll always have requests, it's smart for them to ask for what's the best that you can do for me. That question is being asked of the county and the cities of this area, what can you do for me? And so that leads to these conversations about, well, we've got these resources, others people have these, we're gonna connect, connect you with those and make sure that you're taking advantage of these things. They've created these programs for your advantage. So we get calls or emails, invited them to meetings because of our marketing, people know that we're the contact, we're the ones that, that do work through the issues of whatever it is that we can pull together to make this possible, we're gonna do that.
I mean, I understand that, but I was on the city council when Hamilton Home Builders come to us for tax incentives and we wasn't in C3. I'm getting, I wanna know how you connected with them and how these other companies.
Well, I did the tax abatement forms, I did all of that, the meeting up here at the coffee shop with the folks at Hamilton Homes to get the, uh, get all the eyes dotted and the t's crossed to bring to the council. So I didn't, no, I didn't come to the council meeting to present it. It's their request, it goes, when it does go to the state department revenue, it's strictly between the county and, or the department revenue and that company, I'm not sure that they're, uh, in line, you know, legally. But it was our, we'll say, we don't need just these forms, you need your E-Verify, you need to, uh, to show that you're registered, the Secretary of State to be a new company. You need to show that you're, um, you know, that your time, place and service time matches your startup date, that your investment matches what's eligible for tax abatements.
Do, my question in this kind of is, uh, did C3 go directly to Mercedes and say, we need, uh, training classes down here at Bevel? Or did Mercedes contact Bevel and do that on their own? Or did you, or did you not have a part in connecting that together? And I understand the training part, and I think what a lot of our people looking for in the county is a spinoff job out of Mercedes where we could create some jobs around here, you know, that people can drive local and make twenty, twenty-five bucks an hour instead of driving, you know, two for Toyota or to Conspel or all the way to Tuscaloosa, you know, and keeping our kids local.
Yeah, I'm with you, spinoff jobs from those companies that are here. And, um, yeah, that is the case that we have over half our employees that drive outside of their home county, and that may just be next door. But it's, um, it's the case over half our employees drive outside their home county for work. In our case, it just comes through our business retention efforts, just investing companies and talking to companies. And, um, there's never a week that's not two or three contacts and working on, you know, specific things with companies that come up. Was last week, last week I was in Nashville, a consultants event, but the, um, week prior was with Heister. Had a meeting with them to talk about, hey, we've got this opportunity here and we need to make it, um, smooth, we need to make it so that we know that we can promise to our investors, we're doing all that we can to maximize the potential of these programs for us. We know that Alabama's got good programs and good, good reputation for business environment, so tell us about it. People have to answer those questions and that's why you pull together people that were there at that meeting or that you worked with them, as I did on my way home Friday with a tax incentives policy person. When you're a big company, you get to hire tax incentive policy people from St. Louis to call and say, we've never done this before, we've gotta change, um, you know, ownership at state level. We've gotta look at our investment that we did a couple of years ago, that we've got this window of property tax abatements that they overlap, there's this new project, who we need to talk to. So that's the sort of things that we do to make sure that, um, everything kind of happens again under the radar, that this commission that others that pay our, um, for our organization maybe don't realize. But the good thing is that then at the end of the day, we see success and we celebrate that success in terms of, uh, of jobs. And then mention about Mercedes and Bevel. It's Bevel's role to, and they recognize in meetings that we've had with them, to contact these companies and work out the, you know, the nitty gritty of these agreements with companies so that they're making sure that they're providing the right kind of employees that they're looking for. The, um, in the case of Mercedes, now they're reaching out all over the state, it's really a desperation, people talk about the success of Tuscaloosa area where success hurts. In this case, it's hurting them with their non-Mercedes employers. I was at Mercedes on the campus just a few weeks ago with a guy that lives in Fayette County, it's their, uh, he's their aftermarket warehouse manager. But, uh, yeah, we, we know and people know us at Mercedes, when we are working towards automotive, you know, suppliers, that we hope to have here. Mercedes is just one of eleven companies now automotive manufacturers within two hundred and fifty miles of us. So we went with the Birmingham firm to come up with a marketing campaign. We've been to Detroit just in the past few weeks with Will Taylor, former president of Mercedes, to meet with companies and talk about this area, which we call the crossroads of the automotive south. We also, um, worked closely with the Alabama Automotive Manufacturers Association, Ron Davis, who is the president of that organization, is on our board, lives in Fayette. So, yeah, I don't think you'd ever be afraid or wonder whether they have placed the table, we do. I was able to sit at the recent awards, membership awards ceremony for the Alabama Automotive Manufacturers Association. I sat by a guy from Polaris, the other side of the room was a guy from Mercedes, cause Taylor didn't be there. The governor was at the, the chair, the, um, people from Toyota and Mazda, they all know about this area. And they know it's only a matter of time before we're really gonna hit the jackpot here because people aren't gonna be able to ignore us any longer. We're sitting in the middle of a place that's just surrounded by all of this activity. And yet we've not been considered because of the size of the area. What they don't recognize is all the people that come in, we were looking at that map at Heister just recently, they pulled people from, you know, probably seventy-five minute drive time, just into Heister, five hundred and fifty employees. You've got the same sized company up at Kitchens in, uh, which is Marion County, but the hatable side of Marion County that was incorporated. So we didn't have an ability to pull in a lot of people, but what you look at in terms of demographics is that, well, hey, these are small towns, very rural communities or counties. And, um, so we're trying to say, look a little closer, recognize the size of the drawl of people to this area. And now that we can pull them in with an interstate, it's just hard to beat. But so much so that Greg Canfield, you know, the head of our Department of Commerce, said that we'd be the next top growth region and we keep reminding him that he said that, that he's never ashamed or backed up from that, but he says, uh, it's gonna happen. And we see it happening already, we, as I said, have had, um, one of the largest investments, a warehouser, you know, two hundred and fifty million a couple of years ago. They could have spent that money anywhere, they're a really international company. And they see that the, the workforce and environment in our area is, is the, one of the best anywhere. And so what we do is not only let them get up to. And so what we do is not only let them get up to the point that they're ready to announce and comfortable that they're going to get the promises that they were, were given, but then I spoke to the manager just a couple of weeks ago. He's feeling good and not really anything that he needed, but I want to make sure that his needs are being met. But those are the calls, those are the meetings, those are the types of things that economic development organizations like ours do, and it's not anything that we put in paper, it's not anything that we can promise or ever make an announcement, because it's not our announcement to make, but it's something that we do for you.
David's one of the companies that wants to expand or come to a different place. Who's their, I mean, where do they get their information about our county from and cities from?
Well, it could come from us.
Do you not provide this information for them?
Yeah, it could come from us, it's certainly from our website. We're fortunate to have gotten the domain name northwestalabamaedaa.org, and if you had a focus.
So it could come, or it does come?
No, it, it could, it could come.
It could, well, it'd be already coming, if we paid you. That's my question. My problem is.
But it is coming.
My problem is, how many, how much money do y'all get from all three counties and all towns? That's the question I've been asked. Where do we keep up with our money? Where do we keep up with our itemized state and everything we spend? We want to know what we're getting for our money. That's, and it all boils down to money.
You should.
It all boils down to money.
You should. And our budget's just over four hundred thousand dollars. Our cities pay from five hundred to twenty-five thousand, actually only three that were near that size, as you know, Hamilton's at twenty-five, Fayette twenty-five, and Winfield. But it is by size, so a small community would be only paying five hundred. Counties is thirty thousand. We've never changed our, our due structure, and so we take those and then the fact that we get some of the tax efforts money, like agreements with CDF and with Wega, then we're at the four hundred thousand. We have private members, we've got banks and utilities and just developers, others that are members of our organization. The largest private contributor, utility contributor is Tom Bigby Electric. Steve's here, and we have a great relationship with Tom Bigby Electric in terms of what they're doing with Freedom Fiber, and that's really going to be transformative for this area when you see that we've got broadband capabilities that people wouldn't even expect, especially in rural area. But Steve and I working on telemedicine, the advantages of that, and then also work at home jobs, and those things that would really maximize the use of this broadband that Freedom Fibers bring.
For, for future industries, what, what's in the pipeline that you're working on now?
Well, we write people or contact them every week. I read, picked up the Tennessean when I was in Nashville, recognized it just had a distribution center go up in East Tennessee. The, the best thing I got out of that article was that the, the head of Lowe's is from Tennessee. So there's an article about a Lowe's distribution center, and I plan to call that guy and get in touch with him. And so often we'll get to the president, we'll be able to get them on the phone, and they'll either say we've got some money that would work on that, or thank for calling, we'll, you know, give you notice sort of thing. Last week was Kroger. Kroger's doing about eighteen new distribution centers of different type, but they're getting quite a bit of press on that, and so they've been an easy target for us. But the fact is, companies aren't going to let the press know what they're doing, but their plans are long-term. This is just a revamp of what Kroger has done in the past. And so, so it's just things that we pick up and learn in terms of going to these meetings. I guess last week in Nashville was with site location consultants. Most of the larger companies are going to use site location consultants, and that's just to say that they don't have a corporate real estate department that finds new locations. Rarely are they looking for new locations. But when it happens, it's better for them to just contract out to a site location person. So we're visiting with those folks and talking about Northwest Alabama, and those people have clients, and we may not know, it may just be a code name project, but we just want to hear from them when they have a request or a project.
This, this Bill Zoney?
Yeah.
I'm pronouncing it correctly.
Yeah.
What did y'all do to entice them to come, or are they there just because Heister was there?
Well, they're there just because Heister was there, and they could have decided, hey, we're going to do more up in Chicago, but we've seen something we liked in Solange, and that's just the fact that that, that plant is run really efficiently and clean and safe and we're already growing. They had bought that building across the street over a year ago because we worked on grants for that roof for the building, that sort of thing. And we do work on grants with our communities. If you've ever, you know, need for grants, we'd be happy to help you with that. We work closely with Keith at Northwest Alabama Council of Governments, but we get the call when the plant manager, from the plant manager, to say, we've got this opportunity. Similar when I was meeting at SDR recently, they had a new plant manager, and that happens so that you have to have a re-education of plant managers. You've got a new manager here, for instance, for Syntail, one of your largest employers locally. But you get a call from the manager, hey, we've got this opportunity, we've got to make this happen, we've got to make it happen in a hurry, here's what we see in the issues. And so then you begin the, the meetings and the paperwork, you know, leading to the call last Friday when I was driving, talked about tax abatements. But yeah, so we're part of that process that leads to the success to get to the finish line.
Were enough for C three, who would do this?
I don't know how you could do it, certainly couldn't do it on your own in terms of effective, efficient use of dollars to say, here's some organization in place to represent us and, and can wave the flag, you know, get the banner out there and make sure that we're in the fight for all of these things. We wrote letters for Toyota, Mazda, both in conversations and submitting to the consultant, to the state, to the point that they said, well, you know, we've already got our place, leave us alone. And that place was the bridesmaid's site for Volkswagen, the one that was chosen up in Huntsville. So we always want to make sure that we've got some, somebody somewhere in, you know, employed by you guys that can simply can't get in the hunt. And we're going to be on lookout for that and doing that and making sure we've got the relationships to, to be a part of this process. But this process is always going to be kind of behind the scenes. I'm happy to come and visit with you at any time, and I'll leave you my card, my cell number's there, and it says cell number preferred, and that's just the point that there's, you know, if the phone's not going to ring at the office, I'm going to be somewhere else trying to make something.
So if you've got a four hundred or a thousand dollar budget a year, y'all got anything in reserve?
We do have some money in reserve, but that was for a future office. We'd love to have an office at some point, a little higher profile out of your state, but we were able to do that early, and we've not since, we're not building a bank account, trying to build it, you know.
Well, how does your account, how's it handled? How, who's oversight?
Well, audited each year by Rick McCave, and so we, we each year have our board then giving those statements, presentation by Rick, just very recently he was able to do that, but we, yeah, we're, and we've got some good guys I mentioned on our board that are, are looking at that each month, or every other month, I believe.
When you mentioned, well, ago, the cities and the counties that's paying up, is all those cities that you've mentioned, are they still in?
No, no, Mr. Cobb, the county that's not in.
Well, I get you a year to get us something out, but I said I would come back, and I'd be glad to vote you back in.
Their timeframe is, is.
Didn't I not say that? I said a year, and so far, as far as I know, Hamilton hasn't got anything. And I got nothing to get you personally, I just want to know where the money goes.
All right.
Well, I mean, we're all held accountable for our money.
Yeah.
Well, and. How many, how many cities besides Hamilton's not in? I mean, you've got Fayette, you've got.
I don't know, a few we spoke, Michael and I last week about membership. Marion County, most of the communities are in. The Hamiltons, of course, we've talked to, talked to them just recently about coming back in. They tried some different avenues, didn't work, they're, they're thinking about that they need to come back and be a part of C three, to be, show that unity and to make sure that this area is working together.
Well, I agree, we need somebody to represent these counties, and I agree, we need somebody to represent us. But my thing is, why can't we hire an individual to represent us from Marion County? If, if we, if, if we're eight year now, we've been paying this, and we haven't seen, and you can, and you can say you've talked to people, and I'm not doubting you can talk to people, I'm not saying that you not talk to people, which I talk to people, but what I'm saying is, where's the frig that? Where, what are we getting for our money?
How can you get one person set up and established to, to have that type of marketing impact?
Well, I'm sort of weighing it out, and what have I got now?
Well, you got plenty. I've just mentioned some things.
But I don't know you got a four hundred thousand dollar a year budget, that's more than we got. It's a, these districts coming to, to run on, and we have to show where our money goes.
The, it's all relative. When you, when you look at it, we have to compete with, it's all of the larger communities which have a much, much larger budgets, much, much larger staffs, have specialists in every part of what we do. So, you know, there's a way to spend more, there's a way to spend less, but what you're getting.
But what I'm getting at is, where's the statements at, out of my statement where our money's going? I asked this with the city county. I asked, where is the money going? To this day, I haven't got anything. We're paying you, you should bring it to us. You shouldn't want to get in that. We're paying you, we shouldn't have to chase you down and ask where these, out of my statement track.
I'm not going to, but the big city, you win up here quite a bit, and so that's no problem. Yeah, we'll, we'll share that. But you're going to need some explanation of what this is in terms of other economic development organizations, or the type of money that you would put into certain aspects of economic development.
I'm not saying I don't trust you, you just don't trust anybody, especially when it comes to money. You still want to say that?
Yeah, and that's, that's why I'd be happy to share it with you.
How many y'all have on y'all staff?
There's just two of us, yeah, it's myself and Katie Hallman. We have a, a lower salary minimum that's lined out than we did three years ago. We had for just one year a VP that was to go out and visit industries. What happened, I had worked on that six to seven years to establish relationships with industry, and so I sort of missed the fact that he was now going to see the industries. And in most cases, that can be, it's always going to be a best source of new jobs, companies that are here are going to grow by a few jobs, once you add all that up, that's a lot. But then also, they're good leads, they're, they see things that are happening in their industry that they can give you leads for new companies to come in. And that relationship means so much when you have new companies to visit, that you can ask them, could you meet with these folks and tell them, you know, how it is, and the front lines of good business in this area? So they are, they're just too valuable not to have a direct contact with. And of course, the person that we had went, got a better position, now lives in Birmingham.
State Mazda.
Yeah. I wanted to pack it up a little bit with some of the questions. We were part of, and I'm talking about Tom Bigby Electric, along with other utilities here in the area, part of CDF, and we're also part, we're part of the West Alabama Economic Development Field. This same controversy came up with the CDF, and by the way, the commission paid a lot more money than what you're paying now. As Bob remembers, who was on the commission at that time, about double, if my memory serves me right. So instead of thirty thousand, you were paying seventy thousand. The controversy came up then, well, what have you got for me lately? The idea sprung out among us utilities, working with the communities, and we spent months on this, and then we worked with Bill Axon, Judge Rogers, Judge Oswalt out of Fayette County, who came together to set up what is now, you see now, is C three. The idea was to significantly lower our cost and still try to keep our marketing out there. One of the big problems has always been communication. Now, to be honest with you, as a commission, as David pointed out, you appoint a board member. So it really is the board member's responsibility to come to here. I know you look at David and say, but, but if you're paying, we're all paying him, and Tom Bigby's paying him as well, guess what we want him to do? Market. The whole issue to growth of our county and the well-being of our county is marketing. Going to these trade shows, knocking on the doors. I've been involved in economic development for thirty-five years, and let's just put it the way our Northwest Alabama is. We're not thought of very much, especially out of Montgomery.
I agree.
If we're not out there marketing and picking ourselves up out of the ditch and doing what we're supposed to be doing ourselves, nobody's going to say this. That's what we're involved in, that's what you brought. Now, you appoint board members. Every county appoints board members, the city appoints board members, there are all kinds of attorneys on the board, there are all kinds of accountants on the board, they oversee the money. There is a detailed budget, and if I've been involved in a lot of organizations, every penny is accounted for. Every penny is accounted for. It's properly spent, they go through proper procedures every other month, and I've served on that board for.
But how are we supposed to know that? We ain't got nothing in front of us to look at.
Then, there is a communication issue, and, you know, obviously, everybody who serves on that board are professionals too, and they're very busy, just like y'all are very busy, David's very busy. It's hard, the hardest thing, both in our organizations, in our communities, in our churches, is communication, isn't it?
I agree.
It's, it's, it's hard, because we're all doing our jobs, and then to stop and then say, okay, let's, let's educate, let's make sure the information is out there, it's hard when we're out there doing it so much. And I'm sure your staffs are that way, right? You know what's going on, but what do they know? Well, you hadn't had time to talk, you hadn't had time to deal with this, you hadn't had time to deal with that. That, that goes on. Obviously, that can be improved. There's always, I know in my organization, I can never not stop or not improve communication. I don't, I've never seen one that can't improve of, of any type. So I promise you, C three money, you can't get a better value. Absolutely, you cannot get a better value. One last thing I want, and I'm going to hush. Being in this thing a long time and be unsweetie, that was the mistake of Hamilton, and I've never said that publicly.
Well, I suppose the same thing as I'm asking you to make, and I still have to receive.
But a mayor, or a commission, or anybody else who's elected official, cannot do direct business with Montgomery. Now, is Montgomery being extremely helpful to us? Well, I don't want to be offensive to them. Could we do more? Could we get more? Should we get more? Probably so. But have they, and have we seen recent signs where they're trying? I think absolutely. We went for years, years, without a single prospect being brought up from Montgomery. Number one, that's starting to break. The dam is starting to break, where they're now bringing A D O. That's a huge improvement than what it was ten years ago, and it takes a constant, constant deal. I've had the, it used to be called the A D O, and I knew the director extremely well, I'm sitting in his office, and the thing that he was rapping the most is we would send mayors down there from this community, we'd send mayors down there, and he said, we're tired of dealing with mayors, because we ain't going to deal with politicians. We want y'all to have a professional, and everybody needs to go through a professional. That, that was the emphasis of that too. Why? Because his whole job depends on him doing what he says he's going to do, when he says he's doing, how is it? Truth and, and all of that is fantastically important. It's just.
I'm not disagreeing anything you're saying or he's saying. I mean, I'm not disagreeing any of that. What I'm, my problem is, where's the money trail? Where's the money going?
Well, there's a budget, and there's an audit, and what he needs to do is get you that, so you can see both the budget and the audit. You know, very, very professional firm audits, and always has audits. Well, guess what? We're spending money too, and we want to know every penny, and we're pretty tight, real tight. We want to know every penny has been spent properly too. So there is an audit, there is a budget, and that's all there, and it's clear. He's got to follow some things, you know, the whole thing's there, just need to share that with you so you can look at it, but I promise you, at the end of the day, this is the best value you can humanly expect to get. Yeah, you could go hire somebody, but if you want to hire somebody with the right credentials, right kit, and then you've got to spend years developing relationship, it's going to cost you some serious money, if you want to just do it in Marion County. And the reality was, that's already been tried, and guess what everybody did? They won't try it very long because of the money it was taking.
I think you hit on a main thing, is establishing relationships with these people. We're all new, it's new to me. For us to come together as a county, the three counties, we have all got to establish a rate, a relationship and get together. We, for us to come together as a county, the three counties, we have all got to establish a rate, a relationship and get together.
And you gotta give that time. It will happen. It will happen.
And I've, I've got a question to this, uh, is Scott a member of this committee, board member? Okay, I had an issue with that just myself over the weekend. I wanted to contact Scott. He's the county lawyer, right? Commission. I wanted to contact him and talk to him about C three. He's a board member. I think that's not through the ethics. I don't need to do that. How can he give me advice on what the commission thinks on C three, and him being a board member and drawing a check off C three for his board membership? Who can explain that? Scott might can explain that to me. But I need to come to you and ask your, you know, I, I don't want you to tell me what to do, but I want you to tell me, just like Steve done, how it, how it would help the county as to, uh, resign them or redo the contract. But, if you're, if you're a board member, you're gonna tell me, yeah, you need to do it. And if you're not a board member and you're our lawyer for our commission, you may say, no, you don't need to do it. How, how am I gonna get a straight answer out of that, and how are you tied to that, that, I mean, that's my question.
Couple things. One, we, we don't get paid unless I've not picked up a check somewhere. But as a board member, but I'm, I'm the commission's appointee. If y'all want someone else, y'all can replace me. If you feel like there's a conflict, but I...
No, I, you, you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, I do. Yes, sir.
How would I come to you and ask you that when you're on the board? You're on both sides, you know?
Well, I represent y'all on that board, so...
When is your contract due? When, when, when does it expire?
Our fiscal year is from October to the end of September. It's sort of like we're, you know, within Hamilton, so we'll pay late in the year or early in the year. But, um, our, um, our members pay at any point in time. Some pay by the month, some pay quarterly, uh, some just pay, you know, a single check.
So, when I ask for a financial statement, I should be able to get this before I make my mind up, right?
Yeah, sure.
If everything broke down, where our money's going?
Yep.
How long do we have to, to pay up?
Anytime, yeah. No rush at all. No rush at all.
Uh, I wanna talk about next week, and it's maybe an indicator in the holidays, people get involved in other things, but we're having on Tuesday a call, a conference call with a guy out of the Carolinas. He's working with University of Alabama on startup companies that, uh, three sources, new jobs. Those who start from scratch, those who are here to expand, those that come into the area from elsewhere. Those are the ones who are in the big headlines, new companies coming in. But when you have a company that starts from scratch, a homegrown success, Tiffin's a good one as far as their, uh, start in Red Bay, but, uh, we feel like there are more people that may have an idea and with the right kind of help can form a business. So, we're having, uh, this online meeting with this guy that's talking about a technology village concept that already, University of Alabama's supporting in Coleman and Fairhope, and we're saying, you know, why not here? Especially this has strengthened our duties to take advantage of starting businesses by the fact we've got freedom of power in the area. On Wednesday, we'll have a guy that's an expert and attorney on opportunity zones. Opportunity zones are a new federal program. People can invest their, uh, capital gains. Uh, they can direct those toward opportunity zone projects that save, uh, tax dollars. So we're having that guy, that'll be meeting here to talk about the, uh, that new program. And then on Thursday, I'll have a tour with a guy that's new, that's part of Commerce, a project manager that has worked local, and I appreciate that. He worked in Opelika. I worked in Opelika for a while. But, um, this guy's coming to look around here and get to know the product before he gets back to Montgomery to his desk. He can say, I saw something up there in Marion County that, uh, you may wanna take a look at. So, look forward to, uh, next week. Um, this week, we're, we're meeting with, uh, newly, newly elected members. We had plans with NACO that'd have a meeting, uh, it was probably just a couple of weeks ago, it was canceled at the Holiday Inn. But I do agree with you, Mr. Nichols, we need to get to know each other better, and we'll work toward that, and we'll get you some information like you're asking for. And I appreciate the opportunity to work with you and to be here. Thanks to the board members, and, uh, yeah, they're, um, we feed them lunch, but they haven't, Scott's gotten us a check, and we appreciate Scott and Matt as your representatives.
Tony, I appreciate you coming to. I do know, I don't know of a time that I've ever been serving on this board that you can drive down the main roads here and see signs out there pointing. I think, you know, or, uh, they're saying eighty percent of your jobs come from existing companies. I think we are expanding some of these and getting, uh, so... And I, I think we'll, we'll always have a hard time growing in this area when you have the, the I sixty-five pipeline, not full Birmingham, Montgomery Mobile, can elect your governors and your top officials, so you're always, you're always gonna have to compete against those, uh, larger, uh, places to get, uh, uh, recognition over here in northwest Alabama. But I do think it's, uh, it's coming.
And speaking of the signs, that's another issue I got on, on interstates or sign or billboards you got up is in pitiful shape.
That, um, what he's talking about is that CDF had that sign on the site there, the city's property industrial park, and it's one that, um, we were able to replace several years ago. Uh, one that we've not got any calls on, but it's, um, but we'll, we'll take care of that.
I mean, yeah, did it get took down or replaced?
Yeah.
It looks bad.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Tony, for coming. Is there any questions? Any other questions anyone, uh, who was in attendance today, have anything to say or concerning our industrial development? Appreciate the information. Uh, we have, of course, we looked at, uh, of, uh, financial, of yearly financial statement that we need to vote on and approve, uh, here emotionally approved this yearly financial statement. I make a motion to approve it.
About a second.
I've got a motion on seconds. Is there any other?
Is this it right here?
Yes.
I need it one more time ago.
So this, this...
That's last year's, that'll be. That's not this coming year. That's...
Yeah, that's what I...
That's one that's been approved.
Yeah, but we've, that's, that's what we've done this year.
Right, nothing we do, but it's already, it's already springed, it's springed.
It's going through.
This is a review of last fiscal year. It's the financial statement that we did on September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. There is a state law that says that the yearly financial statement has to come from the books of your county, and it has to be published in your local newspaper before the end of the year. So, this is a yearly financial statement. It tells where we were at the end of September, and then next year, probably around June or July, the state auditors will come in and they will audit your yearly financial statement at that time.
So we've been auditing all, all of it. We'll be soon.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions, comment? I'll personally, I, oh, likewise. Uh, uh, we got a, a comment here to split some traffic, uh, highway and traffic, uh, funds as, as mentioned on your, on your sheet today, on your itinerary sheet today. Uh, Michelle, you have some thoughts about, uh...
Yes, sir.
Heat pumps and, uh, situation at the airport?
Yes, y'all, it allows me to ask me to get some bids, replace heat pump. I contacted three vendors, and we received two responses, um... This is a revised quote from Davis Air, forty-six fifty point fifty-two.
Davis Air?
Uh, Davis, Davis Air, yes, sir.
Four, four, how much?
Four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-two cents. This bid is from Schatz Property Services. They bid forty-six hundred dollars for a train unit, one year parts and labor. And it looks like they bid a Goodman with ten years parts and labor for forty-five hundred. Those are the bids, Mr. Chairman.
Davis Air was on a train though, wasn't it? I think it stayed at the last one.
It, it, it's a two and a half ton train. It is, uh, this quote is to replace a two and a half ton American Standard heat pump with a fourteenth year, two and a half ton train.
What's the shot?
What's the forty-six hundred? It's a train?
It's a train unit as well. When you're parts and labor, then it is an alternate. He bid, um, uh, a Goodman, two and a half ton for forty-five hundred with ten year parts and labor with warranty.
And the forty-six hundred train is two and a half ton too?
Yeah, they're all two and a half tons, it appears.
What about the Davis? They got a, he's gonna get up there?
Yeah, he, he's due for two and a half ton, two and a half.
What about the warranty on it?
Uh, it, uh, it doesn't specify.
The company, the company that builds these air condensers, warranty on them.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna say that it's the same as the, the train on the other one, when you're parts and labor.
They all have the same warranty.
Yeah, uh, the Goodman, of course, he, he's got a ten year on it.
What we usually do is let the engineers on to look over the bids and to recommend, which is, uh, the better of the two bids, or, or any of whatever the bids are.
I'd like to do the bids and make the recommendations.
Or you, at this time of your life, or...
This is first I've looked at them, and we certainly want to look at them, make sure we're comparing apples and apples.
So, the unit that's out there now, is it just not working at all?
It's, it's done. It's, it's got a good place.
Oh, is it eight?
Well, we got, actually, there's three units that operate that building. It's kinda crazy, you know, but there's three separate units that operate that, that airport, FBO building, so...
Oh, without heat?
Yeah, well, for that, for that section of building, yeah, I think we probably need to, within the week, I can, I can get back with the chairman. Any y'all that would want to look at this and, and help look at it, I certainly don't have a problem. But, yeah, we probably wanna do something in the week. We're having some cold weather, and, and we don't want pipes to freeze and things like that. You know, you could get into some other issues and stuff.
I think, it's my understanding, is you mean it's out, it's one that takes care of the restrooms and all too, didn't it?
Yes, yes. That's right, that's correct.
We'll, uh, like, recommendations next Monday, yeah. I'll give them a...
Yeah. Then you can compliment them up to warranty.
Yeah, yeah, it's ten year and one year is a pretty big difference, so, you know, that's, I don't know, we need to investigate and make sure we understand what, what they're, what they're offering.
Okay, if you have any other recommendations next Monday, uh, which?
Will do. I got a couple other items.
Well, I think say the, our core lease one.
Yeah, we, we got a, we got a current lease, and actually, the way the lease reads, it's, it's a two, one year lease, and it automatically, it automatically renews each month. And, and it's with Flick Mix flying service, and they pay us eighty-five hundred dollars per year to use that, that hangar, or a portion of that hangar. They also, we agreed to sell them our fuel at ten cents per gallon over our cost, so that's incentive for them. It's worked very well. I'd recommend that we continue to, continue to lease it month by month. Either party can terminate the lease with thirty days written notice, so, uh...
Is this the hangar that's gonna be tore down?
No, 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 this, this is a large hangar. It's got three, three nice jets in it. I mean, these are, these are like really nice jets, jet aircraft. And it's, it's been a great benefit for our airport, you know, we, we actually had an operating profit last year as a result of this, and, um, you know, we, it's, it's, it's been a good, a good thing for us.
He buys more fuel than everybody puts in.
He does. He buys a lot of fuel, and, um, it's Mr. Tommy Dixon, you know, it, it's just really been good for our airport. It helps us justify a lot of our grant monies that we get, and, you know, he flies in and out a good bit. I think his son flies some, and we sell him a lot of fuel and, um, you know...
But I am right about that one being discussed being tore down.
Yeah, that, that will be tore down.
Yeah, what are you gonna do with the material?
Uh, well, normally, we put that in the bid package.
Well, what I'm getting at is, if everybody's gonna give everybody else, I like to have our district two shop, if I can get the materials.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You could do that if we get, when we get to that point, and, um, it's not really used that much now, but, yeah, I mean...
I mean, I could use the material to put it back together.
That's right. The commission can do whatever you want to. You can keep it, you can put it in the bid, you can sell it, I mean, it's, it's...
I need one, so, I mean, to be fair.
You know, we'll look and see. I know there's some small aircraft in it right now. I just don't, it's, it's pretty nasty over there. But, um, we'll, we'll certainly consider that option when we get to that point, or do, do that when we get to that point. But I'd recommend that we continue month to month. E- everything's good, um, you know, we don't have any issues, and, and I'd just continue going as we go.
And our motion, we accept, uh, his recommendation that we do the same until the point in time that he brings us a different, uh, direction, so to go a different direction of these, uh, the air motion, we continue with, uh, next.
I'll make your motion.
I think, I, oh, I would say I, oh, likewise.
Okay, got another lease issue. Also, something else that we do, of course, mowing the airport is, is a major undertaking, so, undertaking. So, what we've done, we've actually leased parcels of land to the farmers. And it keeps, it keeps the, the, the foliage down. We don't have to bush hog it. And we actually have four, three leases. One of them's due in January, the other one's actually due now. Mr. Kenneth Moore, he leases twelve acres, we charge him two, he gets two hundred dollars. And he keeps it cut and keeps it farmed, and that's good. And Mr. Wade Rollins, he, he gets about twenty acres, and he pays us five hundred dollars. And I gotta understand, we're not gonna touch that, and, and they're keeping, you know, there's, there's rules and regulations in the bid, in, in the, the lease, they can't grow really high crop or things, trees, where, of course, that would be a obstruction to the aircraft, so... And then Mr. Carl Lucas has got eleven acres, and he pays us two hundred dollars. So I would recommend that we authorize the chairman to enter any, any lease agreements, uh, based on the terms that we've mentioned for the county.
I'll make a motion. I'll say.
Oh, thank God. Oh, likewise.
One other item, Mr. Chairman, I'll be out of your way. Uh, currently, the way we do things as far as hiring employees, we have a probationary period for all of our employees. We have a six-month probationary period, and after that six months, as fast as they've met the requirements, I recommend that they be put as full-time classified employees. And Mr. Chandler, actually, it becomes effective January the seventh, when he gets his six months in. But being holidays and everything, I'd like to go ahead and recommend, effective that date, that he be transferred to full-time classified employee. And that way, he would be afforded the benefits of full-time employees, you know, and so, you know, I'd recommend that. And he, he was hired as a probationary. I couldn't tell you what vacancy it was at the time right now. I didn't, didn't think to get that, but, but it was, it, it came from the vacancy. It's somebody that's been in the system that we hired, interviewed, and, and worked out his probationary. Recommend y'all...
How do you, like, I ain't gonna promote that, but how do you, like, the hiring part? Say, if someone, say this guy here, he's in one or five, or lives in two or three, and, and one of these people quit, do they, do they, can they be replaced with the same, if he come out of the same district?
We, well, here's what we, there's two different things. We, we would normally do an interdepartmental tran- transfer, or, or interdepartmental promotion, where we could actually offer the job to our in-house employees first before we go to the outside. We typically do that a- anyways, in that, we would advertise it as an interdepartmental promotion, and then, then the people within the county could apply for it. And then we would interview those, and we'd make that same recommendation to the county commission. Now, if we go to the outside, we post it on the bulletin board in, in the places that we normally place things, and we'll, I don't, I'm not sure we put it in the paper every time. We, we might, we might not. Yeah, we advertise it, but we try to give everybody an equal opportunity to have that job. So, but if it is interdepartmental, you can, you can do that.
You're involved in that.
Okay.
Tanner, Tanner's with the garbage box too.
Yeah, that, that's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Oh, thank God. Oh, likewise.
That's all, Mr. Chairman. Another question.
I believe that's not on our agenda for today. Uh, your motion, uh, did you?
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry.
Oh, thank God. Oh, likewise.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynews.